Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the January 24th Board of Select Board Meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does anyone have any public comments this evening? Okay. Thank you. So we will start this evening with our governmental reports. And our first item on our agenda is an update from the Commission on the Ability Assistance Committee. And I believe we have Phyllis Jones with us.
Yes, you do. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me before you this evening so I can report in. It's been quite a while since I've been able to report in and let you all know what's going on. So I'm just going to take it down and, you know, if you decide you want to stop me at any point, please let me know. First and foremost, over the past summer, I attended remotely Massachusetts Office on Disability Seminar, and it was regarding accessible open meetings for municipalities. I did share the PowerPoint on this with Ms. Rodriguez. I don't know whether or not she's had the opportunity to share it with you at all. Well, a few things that I took away that we might want to keep in mind when we hold these public meetings is in terms of reasonable accommodations. For example, it was interesting to learn that if a resident asks for an ASL interpreter and you go to provide CART services instead, that's not considered a reasonable accommodation unless the person who's asked for the interpreter agrees to that and vice versa. In terms of when a meeting is in person, for example, when we hold town meeting at the high school inside, that not all the handicap seating is supposed to be corralled into one area. It's actually supposed to be interspersed so that people are not feeling like there's a handicap seating section, everybody else section. Also, we were talking about municipal ADA grants, and those are to make town buildings more accessible. I know that you've recently accepted a grant from the state to have an ADA coordinator brought on board, but I wanted you to be aware of those grants so that as the ADA coordinator finds anything that needs to be done to the town or for the town in terms of municipal buildings, that perhaps maybe that's something that the town could seek through the Mass Office of Disability. And then the only other matter on that particular seminar that I thought, or the Commission thought was good to bring to your attention, is when we are having these remote meetings, there should be an option for closed captioning as well as the ability for all remote viewers to make comment if comment is allowed by people who are actually sitting in person. And as part of this, what the Commission has done is we've created a free Zoom account. I notice here that the Board has Google meets, and if somebody wants to help me put a Google meets account together instead to make it, and we've been publishing that on our agendas so that if anybody wants to be able to participate remotely, they'll be able to do so. We actually made use of that opportunity at our meeting just the other day where one of our members did not want to come in person due to health concerns, and Representative Traum Nguyen attended also remotely. We were looking at some crosswalk issues along Mass Ave now that Mass Ave has sidewalks that go from 125 straight into downtown on both ends. And we noticed that by the library along Main Street, excuse me, it was Main Street, not Mass Ave, my apologies, along Main Street at Main and Green, Main and Davis, and Main and Tavern, there are no crosswalks there. And now that we have a sidewalk going straight down from 125 to downtown on Main Street, we would request that perhaps maybe sidewalks be put there as well, uh, crosswalks, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. On the Complete Streets prioritization plan, when we reviewed that plan and listened in on those meetings, we had heard that there were concerns about not enough crosswalks around town. There were concerns regarding bike lanes and concerns about sidewalk safety, where a lot of the sidewalks aren't even, they're not completely put together again properly. And so, for example, if you have somebody with a mobility concern, whether it be on a wheelchair or just they're not as stable on their feet, that it could cause a problem for them. We were made aware that Sutton Street Apartments at 505 Sutton Street is looking for an ordinance. They're requesting an ordinance from the state that they want a variance for six and a half inch kitchen sinks. One of our members is a Realtor and he's done architecture, so he really looked at these plans. And what he's saying is the depth requirement is only necessary for FHA ADA compliant unions. And the only thing he could conclude was that the seven accessible apartments are not exclusively built and designed for handicap tenants, but that the owners were planning on making them accessible on an as-needed basis. And then in order to be fully ADA compliant, the sink base would also need to be open in order to accommodate a wheelchair user. But they don't fall under the ADA requirements as much as the Fair Housing Amendments. Mr. French suggested that the Commission should have no objection to this request variance, and the Commission approved that to go forward. The community center. We've had a resident come to our meeting recently who gave their concerns about the fact that this is a community center and not a traditional senior center. We told them we would note that when we checked in with you at this time. And going a little bit further entail, they had showed us some blueprints or plans for the senior center. And Mr. French, again, who is a, was a Realtor and architect, looked over those plans, and the only concerns we have are on the second floor, we weren't seeing on the plans we were provided that there were any exterior fire escapes on the plan. If that has been perhaps changed from the blueprints that we have, that would be, that's wonderful, and we'd love to find out on that. We've established a relationship with Ms. Deanna Lima over at the North End of her Police Department, and she is looking at programs that could provide some extra training for our first responders, especially when it comes to, for example, a first responder having to deal with a situation where there might be somebody with autism, for example, to just give the, give the first responders a little bit more information. She had also found some legislation in Connecticut that we've passed along at her request to our state delegation about blue envelopes. I'm sure you're familiar with the white envelopes that a lot of deaf and hard-of-hearing people have in their cars. And if you're not, I'm happy to. I don't know if you can even see this. But it's an envelope that a lot of people put up in their car so that they're being pulled over. They can point. And then in them, they have a bunch of different things so that the officer can communicate effectively with them. We would request that perhaps the Select Board write a letter to our delegation in support of something like these blue envelopes that Connecticut has enacted in the hopes that providing better support for not only our first responders, but our community as a whole. I don't know if any of you have had the ability to watch our December episode of Ability Assistance. The episodes are, if you're those delegation members on the show. And in reviewing the statutes that we wanted to talk about, we came across that one of the state statutes, still the name of the chapter has the R word in it. And when we brought that to their attention, they're looking into that on their end. However, it was recommended perhaps that we suggest that the town look through their charter completely or our charter completely to make sure that outdated terms such as that no longer exist in the charter and that perhaps maybe it should be taken up more appropriate terms for today's point of view were to be put in there. And in addition to that, the Commission would also respectfully request that the town send a letter to the state delegation in support of S. and SAM 2484. It is an act addressing care for mental health children for onboarding at hospitals. I know of at least one North End of her resident who would have been helped significantly if this bill was put in place. And it's regarding how much time a child who's in a hospital and stays for psychiatric care is allowed to be kept in the ER versus kept in general pediatrics versus then being able to put into a pediatric facility to obtain assistance while in the hospital. As of May, this coming May, we will have had 25 guests on Ability Assistance. Our first program aired back in July of 2018, if you can believe it or not. We've had tremendous success in terms of hearing back from other communities in the area that they're watching the program through YouTube and other formats that North End of her CAM has in terms of putting the program out there. We've also heard from multiple residents that they've been happy with the program. So again, as always, thank you for letting us do this because it's obviously making a voice out there to provide information to our residents. And we've also been getting positive feedback from the students from GLTS who've been working our crew because through allowing them or giving them the opportunity to volunteer on the program, it has given them the ability to get a piece of education that they're not getting at GLTS in terms of the real studio piece of it. Furthermore, we'd like to take the program the next step if possible. We wanted to add a talent segment at the back of the program, giving residents of all abilities time to maybe showcase something. A child with autism who can play the piano, and they send in, you know, a little clip and at the end of the episode, before the ending credits, we can say, and please enjoy this, you know, performance by name of child who, you know, and to just put it in there like a two or three-minute little thing and let it roll out there. And open it up to all residents of all different abilities to be able to showcase their talents. I wanted to also bring that to your attention with that in that way because I'm sure there are copyright concerns and other concerns that might be of concern to the town rather than just putting it out there completely. I know that's an exhaustive report, and I've tried to get it, get through it as quickly as possible. And I'll put it out there because I know I'm asked every year whether or not somebody else wants my job, and I put it out there at least twice a year. And everybody's happy with the fact that I'm chair and nobody wants to take it over.
Thank you so much, Phyllis. I will open it up to the Board to see if anybody has any questions. Yeah, go ahead.
It sounds like you and your committee and your group are just doing a marvelous job. I was so pleased to hear about the little bit of the talent at the end. I thought, what a great fun idea and how fun for the family of who was ever showcasing their talent. And I think, I just think it's a great way of reaching out where people of all different abilities, some better than others, if they're, if they're singing or dancing or artwork better than I. I love that.
And myself, well.
Yeah. I think it's great, and it's just another fun way is an outreach to the community that, that everybody's special in some way or another and with their talents and their skills. So, thank you. Great, great presentation.
I guess I'll wait back to hear possibly from Ms. Rodriguez to determine whether or not that's something we can go ahead with based upon whatever concerns the town might have in terms of copyright issues or releases.
We'll let the two lawyers figure it out.
Yeah. I will let you know, the only issue would be if it's a song that is owned by a company that we don't already have a license with, so I will, I'll have Suzanne give you a call on that.
Fair enough.
I have a list here too, so I'll get back to you on the other items as well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Hey, Phyllis, just a question. You talked about the, what you're doing, blue envelopes for the hearing impaired. What is it you need from the Board? You said write a letter. Is that a law that needs to be put in place or is that just?
Well, yeah, what we did was, and this email was just sent to our delegation yesterday because I had just heard from Deanna about that yesterday. But we're, we would like to see Deanna and I, as well as the Commission, as a whole, want to see anything that can be done for our first responders. And when this law was down in Connecticut, we thought, what a fantastic idea. And we would hope that perhaps maybe the town would write a letter to our delegation saying, we learned about this Connecticut law, we are in favor of it, and we would like you to, you know, put up for something here in Massachusetts. Again, something similar to, and the blue law, what it is, is the same sort of thing as these white envelopes that a lot of deaf and hard-of-hearing people have in the car. And the intent of it is more so, especially with somebody with autism, you know, you have somebody who gets pulled over or is in an accident and a first responder shows up, depending upon what that person's level with autism is and what their triggers are. And I'm thinking extremely worst-case scenarios here to just put it in context for you. You have a young adult who's over the age of 18, who's a passenger with a parent who can't communicate on the child's behalf because of whatever accident they were in. An officer comes, the young adult is just flailing and screaming all over the place. The officer doesn't know that this is just, this is how this person reacts regarding issues of this type of nature because of their autism. And then a different way of handling it is dealt with, and it could have disastrous results for the person with autism and also for our first responder who, if the person only knew the information, could have handled the situation incredibly differently. I do know from talking to a couple of members in the, in the Police Department that they do get extensive training to be able to learn more and more on how to handle these types of procedures. But our thought is, is anytime you can give them more information when they walk into a situation, it just gives our first responders that much more of an ability to handle the situation in the best way possible.
Very good. Yeah, it's a good idea. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for the work that you do and the Commission does. And certainly, I will speak for myself, but also my fellow Board members. I think that we would be happy to help out in any way that we are able. It's super helpful when you come to us and summarize everything because there's a lot to keep track of. So, thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
I just echo really what the rest of the Board has said and the fact that we can maybe help incrementally by putting that letter out. And of course, we've got a great relationship with our delegation to start with. We know they're very responsive.
Almost definitely, yes.
It's, it's nice to be able to work hand in hand with that. So, Madam Chair, if you could help us pull that together, that'd be great.
Definitely. Be happy to. Again, thank you, Phyllis, so much for that wonderful report. It's quite impressive how many areas you guys touched, from the senior center to crosswalks to the legislation that you just brought to our attention. So you guys are doing wonderful work, and we appreciate you coming to our meeting and letting us know about that. And we are more than happy to help when we can. So I will definitely meet with the town manager and we'll do what we can.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
We will move on to a quarterly update on the master, from the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and we have the Chair, John Strohs, with us, I believe.
Hi.
Hi, John. How are you, John?
Good, thank you. I got a, I got a tough act to follow after that, so. So I just wanted to take a moment. Thank you for your time. Just wanted to present our fifth quarterly progress report on town-related activities and the continued implementation of strategies and recommendations as proposed in the town's 2018 Master Plan. Primary activities of the committee during this past quarter were to evaluate major projects before the town for the relationship to the master plan. Specifically, we reviewed the Downtown Improvements Master Plan that was finalized. And then our committee, using a framework that we previously developed and redefined since we started, we conducted an objective review of the project, of the Downtown Master, Downtown Improvements Master Plan with respect to how it matched up with the elements and specific strategies that were outlined in that 2018 Master Plan. And I believe we've included a copy of that framework for you, for your review along with the agenda tonight. Moving forward, we've outlined the objectives for our next quarter, which include sustaining discussions and outreach with groups, organizations, and town bodies responsible for implementing the selected strategies from that master plan. We are looking to continue to identify strategies which may well be underway or completed through active and/or proposed projects, initiatives, and governance for the town. We are looking to continue to monitor the proposed Royal Crest redevelopment as warranted. That's, that's a constantly evolving project. And the big one for us is we're looking to provide a new webpage available to the public that specifically details progress on all strategies contained within the master plan. And we're currently working on that. We have it outlined. We're looking to provide substantial material behind that and hopefully do a soft launch in the next quarter. So that's where we are. We continue to meet on a monthly basis right now. And as, you know, we keep an eye out for projects, initiatives, proposed legislation that comes before the town to see if it's applicable and if it's, if it's something we should weigh in on. And again, we provide an objective analysis of all that, so.
Thank you, John. Does anyone have any questions for John?
Hey, John, thank you for the report. It's great. So anything that you need from this Board, anything that we can do to support you or anything that we can do better that we're not doing well now, you know? I know it's all, you know, it's during COVID, it's difficult to attend meetings and things like that, but is it things, anything that, you know, you see that we could be helping with and helping to help you?
So far, we're, we're in pretty good shape. You know, it helps that we have a member of the Select Board on our committee as well. But, you know, again, as, right now in front of us, there's nothing we specifically need. And again, we have a conduit for that if we do. But we're, we're in pretty good shape. It's just, if anything, it's just to keep a line of communication so that if projects and whatnot come before the town that are something that we should be looking at, we just need to make sure we have that connection so that we can go ahead and do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just would want to note that the work that the committee is doing, and again, we've got one member sitting in the audience, also Stan, that the webpage, I think, is, is a really big step because one of the things that the town has done, and Melissa's really fostered and Andrew obviously carrying through, is that transparency that is active and evolving, right? And as things happen. And now that we're, you say, you know, realize, you say the master plan of 2018, that's four years ago now, right? These things are supposed to be 10 years, right? We look at every 10 years. So we're approaching the halfway point. And so I think there's a lot that's been done. There's a lot that's in play. So I think there's the idea of the website and trying to match that with what we're doing, that rhythm and that connectivity gets really important, especially as we get closer to town meeting because these evaluations are as much as possible to be objective and another way for people to get factual information to decide how they should approach this. And so I really commend, I know Dan Beckley has been working on it with Andrew and you and Meredith. So thanks and really looking forward to it.
The frameworks are really invaluable, and they're easy to digest, and it's a great place for us to send people when they're looking for information. So your work is very much appreciated as we take these projects all in one at a time.
Thank you.
John, I just want to echo to that these spreadsheets that you guys create for each individual plan are so helpful to take a look at. So, and we really appreciate all that hard work that it takes to put these together because it's not easy, I'm sure, to go through all of the objectives of the master plan and pick out which ones apply to the downtown improvement or Royal Crest or any project that you're looking at. So we really do appreciate all that time and effort that you and your committee are putting into this. I just had two questions, I guess, for you on, when you guys were looking at the downtown improvement plan, did you guys talk about or consider whether the overhead wire or undergrounding the overhead wires are, you know, beneficial or how that hits upon the master plan? I know it's kind of a hot-button topic, but I was just curious what you guys had discussed.
If I remember correctly, so, you know, the downtown improvements, when it was proposed, it was like an option A, option B. One was to have, continue having overhead wires. One was to, you know, look into the possibility of, of undergrounding the public utilities. Obviously, there's a, there's a significant cost associated with that. And, you know, there's, there are, there are benefits beyond aesthetics at play. So I think, I think we said to the effect of, yes, it'd be, you know, it'd be absolutely nice if we can make that work because the chance to underground utilities are, those are few and far between. So if you're going to do it, you're going to do it in conjunction with this project when everything's being torn up anyways because you're not going to do it at a later date and you're not going to save any money by kicking can down the road. So it's, it's, it ultimately boils down So, it's, it's, it ultimately boils down to, can we afford to do it? It, it'd be nice to do if the money is there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I know that there are obviously pros and cons to leaving them or undergrounding them. And it's a topic for conversation, but I was, but you're right. It is, if we're going to do it, that's the time to do it. So, thank you. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but were you talking about putting signs? Kind of like completed like around town? Or was that part of, like, things that were completed for the master plan?
So, within one, one of the objects in, in our evaluation of the master plan, we've gone through and certain strategies and/or elements or goals that have been met or completed, we've identified, I think, out of the 130-something, I think, three we've, we've noted or definitively completed at this point. Obviously, you know, for instance, the adopting a complete speech policy. That's, that's, that's done. That was identified and it's been carried out. So, the idea of this website is, is basically providing a bit of a visual measuring stick to see what we started with and where we are at. And it's, it's going to be a constantly updated website. So, as elements, as we gain more information, as studies are completed, as projects are completed, the website will be updated to reflect that. So, it'll be, you know, so for the life of the 2018 master plan through its, its lifespan, we'll be able to see where we've started, where we are, where we want to be, what's left to do type thing.
Great. I think that'll be wonderful. I think that'd be a great resource for the town. So. But thank you for coming tonight. We really appreciate you coming and we enjoy when you come to give us an update. So, thank you and we'll see you in a couple of months.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night. Thank you.
And, yeah.
Wow, okay.
Is this good or bad?
Second presentation.
Presentation.
Quick update on the facility master plan two. So, I didn't, ooh, everything's black now.
Right. Well, we're going to pass it over to our town manager for facilities master plan to update.
Coming slowly but surely.
I will be vivid.
I've already used this once today, so I know it's worked. Well, I know why.
Can you see it?
All right. Can you see it on the screen down there too? White panel?
No.
Should be on there. All right. Well, it's mostly words anyway. Not much visual, but. I'm going to the school committee on Thursday, as you all know, to talk a little bit about facilities master plan two. And these are some of the slides that I'm going to be reviewing with them. I met with the Chair today and we're going to do a little bit of a review of what we did in our tri board meeting. But I did want to kind of show you a few of the things that we've updated since then. So, we're going to do a quick review of just facilities master plan one. So, as you know, that report, and I just did this slide and I already see a typo, report was completed in 2012 with the final project being completed in February of fiscal year '23. It was brought forward a recommended scenario, which included seven buildings for a total of $24,489,470. The final cost of that was actually $45 million. And the plan at that time was for the former police station to become the school administration building, for the senior center to expand on the current site, to put a gym at Kittredge, a new fire station. Main Street Fire was just listed in there and I couldn't really figure out what that meant, but maybe, well, it used to be here, but yeah. School classrooms and DPW garage. As we know, the final plan actually ended up including Town Hall in the ABECC. And a lot of those sites actually changed for the projects, right? So, while we had a plan, the plan was in flux. And I think that's an important thing to remember as we're all going through this process, right? And so, just a reminder about that recommended order of projects. We're starting with the middle school, then Kittredge, the fire station, the Franklin Gymnasium, the Atkinson School, the Youth Center, the Franklin School, and then the ABECC. Why this timeline? Because today, this works financially. A reminder that it's a flux plan. It's easiest for us to plan for five years. That's why we forecast in five years, why we don't forecast in 25-year plans. Because revenues change, information changes, needs change. And just a reminder, I think, kind of what I think about it, is that we can't let perfection get in the way of progress. So, if we're so worried what's going to happen in 20 years, we're not going to get done what's going to happen in two years. And I think that's just something that we need to remember as we're trying to kind of trudge through this. And I'll be fixing this up. This is just kind of a preview. And so, again, the projected costs, if we were doing it in today's dollars, we were going to prove everything tomorrow. It would be $139 million. If we use the proposed plan, it's $166 million, almost $167. It takes 15 years and it accounts for inflation. And it's 3% for operating and 5% for construction.
Did you say that again, please?
Yep. So, I actually can remember it right here.
That last line.
Um, it's 3%, yeah, 3% for operating inflation a year and 5% for construction cost inflation per year. And this kind of breaks down what's included. And this is an all-in philosophy. Total design, total construction, the operating cost, right down to what it's going to cost for us to heat these new buildings. I'll tell you, we're doing the fiscal year '23 budget right now. And we're bringing on the senior center for half of a year. And we're talking about what it's going to cost to heat that, what it's going to cost electricity. And we want to make sure we're planning for all of that now, so it's not a surprise in fiscal year '30 when we bring on a new school. How we're going to fund it, you guys remember this from before, the design. The middle school, we're using an appropriation from the operating budget. For Kittredge, we're using a combination of the appropriation from the operating budget and free cash. Both of those are in fiscal year '23. In future years, we're using a combination of debt capacity that we've used as almost a savings account, free cash in the capital stabilization account that we've been building over the last few years. Funding the construction, you'll remember this from last time, 24 is capacity within the levy. 25, we have Kittredge. There's two scenarios with a 60-40 split. If we have MSBA, we would use capacity within the levy and Amazon new growth from the TIF. If we don't get MSBA, then we would use a half 60% capacity within the levy and 40% of debt exclusion. Fiscal year '26 would be the fire station, capacity within the levy. Fiscal year '26 would also be the Franklin Gym. We'd use capacity, debt capacity reserved. So, we have some money that we had saved over multiple years, again, like that savings account we were talking about. And it's almost like using cash on hand. Fiscal year '28, we do Atkinson and the Youth Center, $7.4 million in the levy and $23.9 million excluded. And then moving out to those further years, fiscal year '35, Franklin, $19 million in the levy, $18 million would either be new growth or a debt exclusion. And fiscal year '36, ABECC within the levy. Again, easier for me to plan out to '28, a lot harder in those harder later years. How we're doing it was so few debt exclusions. We, and what is a debt exclusion, just a reminder, that's a temporary, I've skipped this nine times today. It's not happy with me. It's a temporary increase to the levy to pay for debt for a specific purpose. So, twofold. We know we have these big projects on the horizon. In the last few years, we've used cash on hand to pay for all of our capital. We haven't taken debt in the last three years doing the budget. We've been saving and saving and saving. And by doing that, we're taking advantage of our decreasing debt. So, we know we have $72 million in capacity coming over a 25-year period. By using that capacity, we're keeping our debt payment level and avoiding a large impact on taxpayers. Really important, right? No one's going to see a huge impact and that's what we're trying to avoid. The operating costs under the proposed plan would all be funded with new growth. We would see no operating override. So, in the proposed plan, the one we've been talking about, this is the impact on the average single-family tax bill. Same thing we saw last time. We presented to the tri board. If we got the MSBA funding, $5,915 over a period of 30 years. Fiscal year '28 to '34, the average single-family tax bill would increase by $158. Fiscal year '35 to '52, the average single-family tax bill would increase by $274. Fiscal year '54 to '57, the average single-family tax bill would increase by $116.
So, could I just, one second.
Yeah.
Point of reference here, you break it down by the year, you break it down over 30 years. Still, when somebody looks at that, it's $59,000, $5,900.
Over 30 years.
Over 30 years. But what we lose in that context is what is the amount of taxes you would pay over that 30-year period? And so, just an impression, I don't know if others on the board, if you think it's helpful to kind of have that frame of reference. Because again, you look at $158 a year, if the average tax.
What you would pay anyway. Okay.
In addition, right, so, I mean, if you're paying, if your ta, if the average tax bill is $7,000, you, you get some frame of reference of what $158 is.
Sure.
You multiply it over 30 years, it's the same thing.
Yep.
It might be helpful. I don't know if.
I absolutely can show that.
Think.
I can. Yeah, that's fine. And I think, you know, when I, first look at this, you think $158 and then you think, well, that's $10 a month, right? A little more than $10 a month.
And I always just, I know what my tax bill is, so I look at that and.
Yeah. I can absolutely show that. I can, what I can do is I can pick a, I can take one of the actual average single-family homes.
Exactly.
And show it on a chart. I can create that. And then, without MSBA funding, it would be $12,363 over a period of 33 years because it takes a little longer for us to pay and that shows what your payment would be over that same period of time. So, if you're.
Increase in your payment.
It would be an increase in your payment.
Very important.
That MSBA funding is very important.
Very.
So, this is the five-year, and I keep saying, we've got to think about it in five years. So, for five years, the increased cost to the taxpayer, if we get MSBA funding, is nothing. I think that's really important.
And what are we getting?
Right. And we'd be getting, right. We can go back and look, the middle school, we'd be getting Kittredge, right? There's a lot of things that would be coming on over that five-year period and it would cost us nothing. And I just think that's really important for people to remember.
Yep.
Okay. The five-year increased cost to a taxpayer without MSBA would be the 248, the 248, and the 248. Okay? And I can add, I'll put a little chart here to show what you would get. That's helpful.
Yep.
So, then, a lot, a lot of, there was a lot of talk in the meeting about what if we moved Franklin, ABECC up? So, I wanted to reflect that too. So, I think that's important. So, what I did was I created a new chart. I moved Franklin up to fiscal year '30 and ABECC up to fiscal year '31 for construction. I just wanted to note two things here. This would require some more debt exclusions and also there would be a permanent override because in the original scenario, I had done all of the operating using new growth coming on. I was no longer able to do that. So, I had to account for an override of $80 a year for, for the average taxpayer. So, if we got MSBA funding under this scenario, this move-up scenario, it would be $9,499 over a period of 30 years. And if we did not get MSBA funding under this scenario, it would be $16,964 over a period of 30 years. Payments averaged from $80 to $318, to $410 under the first scenario and then from $80 to $658 over the second scenario.
Interesting kind of math because you had, previous slide, it's 6,012,000, right? And it's, it's kind of right in the middle.
It's the inflation.
But it's just sort of, it's interesting is that, you know, we're looking at the two likely scenarios, but you actually split the difference between those two scenarios by moving it up, if you could.
With the MSBA.
With the MSBA funding.
Without it, it's a whole different ballgame, too.
So, interesting, but good to have all the data.
The debt exclusion override that becomes permanent, that's kind of a combination of words that I'm, I don't think we're familiar with. Debt exclusion means once it's paid, it's off.
So, I'm actually, in the next slide, I'm going to talk about debt exclusions and overrides. So, it would be, this would require both a debt exclusion and an operating override. The operating override would be permanent. The debt exclusion would go away.
In there though, because it is confusing.
So, I did a memo, which is attached to the agenda, that kind of is technical and I sent it to all of you. This, I tried to make a little bit easier. So, an override is a permanent increase of the levy.
Yes.
For municipal operating budget purposes, right? An exclusion, it can be used for debt or a single capital project. It's temporary until the project or the debt is paid, right? They both require a question to be placed on an election ballot by the select board. There is no other way that an override or an exclusion question can be placed on a ballot. It can't be a citizen petition. It can't be put on by the town manager. It can't be put on by a different committee. Only people who can put it on is the select board.
And how many votes does that require?
Three.
It's three, so it's a majority.
To put it on the, to put it on the ballot, yes, three.
Okay. I thought it was four, but that's okay.
I think it's a majority. It can happen either before or after town meeting. You don't have to do your override vote. Like, you could choose to do it at your March election because you want to have a good turnout. I don't advise that because the educational part is at town meeting, right? So, typically, you see it after. A really important thing to remember is that local officials cannot publish or provide voter information materials at the public expense. We can educate about the projects, like I just did, but we can't go out and say, this is why this project's really good and vote. Okay? I think it's really important to note, and I just kind of keep saying it, the proposed plan does not require any override votes. And it does not require an exclusion vote until fiscal '28 with MSBA and fiscal '26 without MSBA. All we're doing this year, the only thing we're doing, is voting to fund two designs at town meeting using cash. Okay? It's only a majority vote. And what's next? So, the final report, which Laurie has been working on and actually sent out to the committee today, I assume we'll probably have it probably next week finalized. After that, we're going to have a public meeting, kind of like we did the Amazon meeting with the call-in. I think people like that. Town meeting 2022 will kick off the process. A reminder, every single project needs individual approvals. So, we don't need some mass approval. We're going to have to keep doing this every year and keep getting everyone together. So, I don't want people to have, lose too much momentum. This is like a long-term thing. And again, action taken at town meeting '22 will not cause any increases to taxes in fiscal year '23. And I just think that's important. And that's the whole thing. I just wanted you guys to be aware of it. I'm going to bring it to the school committee on Thursday. I'll share it with the finance committee as well. But there seems to be some kind of question in the air and I want to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
That's a big puzzle you put together.
It's a big puzzle.
Big puzzle. It's all coming together, though.
It is coming together. Yeah.
It's coming together.
I agree.
So, thank you. Yeah, I think it's important that we keep talking about the fact that it's fluid, right? We're not, it's not set in stone today. There's so many variables, especially once we hit that five-year mark, that we don't know. We can't project out new growth. You know, it could speed up. Construction could slow down the process, like in, there's so much coordination and that the schools themselves need to do with all these projects going on as far as students and construction coordination and where people are during the process, where kids are during the process, keeping everybody safe. So, I think, I know that you have, a lot of talk keeps coming up about your fiscal year '36 and that it's really far out, but this is just like the goal, right? And what we're all kind of buying into and like, we're, we want to be excited about it and focused on it and working on it and making it a success.
I think back, like, if you think about the town manager five years ago sitting here, if he said to you, we will be having $6 million in new growth from Amazon and two apartment complexes and a battery-making facility and a storage facility, you would have all thought he was crazy, right? So, so much can change in just a three-year period, right? And new revenue comes on. We have a pandemic, you know, so, right, a lot, a lot of things can change.
Don, would you like to?
My Donald School of Fifty-Two Crosses, please. Great job on this. It's amazing the way times have changed. If you, most of you people weren't born in 1990, but they were fighting over half teacher salaries. But that's, that's how bad things were. And this, this plan here is, is, there's a lot of work under that. Congratulations to the community for doing this.
So much.
After the first master plan that I was involved in, that finally worked how we never thought it would be. So, this one looks even better. So, congratulations to everybody.
Thank you so much, Don. Appreciate that. It is a lot, there's so many people that have worked so hard on this to get it to this point. And I think you're right, we've got to focus on one year at a time in like step one and realize how much we're doing within our tax levy. That we're really going to see a lot of great growth in, not growth in the town, improvements to our schools and facilities within our capacity. So.
Yeah. It's still, it's wonderful to match the value proposition with a financial plan that's proven a track record of process. And I think kind of blending them two, it's sort of a, it's a, it's a real different challenge in a good way of what we've been doing in the past because of the scope of it. But that's really what the last master plan was about, proving that the process works.
Right.
That there's an incremental and now you can really, that's 2.0. That's what 2.0 does. So, yeah, I'm excited. Thank you, Melissa.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're a good team. We're very lucky.
All right. We will move on to our last update of the. All right, we will move on to our last update of the evening with our health director, Brian LaGrasse, on COVID-nineteen.
Poor Dean, whenever there's applause, we all go to Dean.
All right, can you hear me?
Oh, hey, Brian, how are you?
Good, good, thanks. Uh, great to see you, everybody, it's been a while since I was before you, so, thank you for having me back again. Uh, a lot has happened since last time I was here, like, before, last time I was here, Omicron has come through town, uh, basically took over everything right before the holidays, which was perfect timing. Um, obviously, we did see a huge spike, uh, during this winter, after Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Year's. Um, you guys are all aware that our numbers definitely spiked way, way far up. Um, we're down after the post-holiday spike, which is great to see. Um, luckily, we're on the decline now at this point. We have, right now, we have about a hundred and twenty-five active cases, where two weeks ago, we were at almost four hundred, so definitely coming back down, which is great. Um, our daily cases are dropping locally, uh, across the region and across the state too, which is good. Um, the state's been looking at all sorts of different data to see how the at-home tests would be affecting it, but what they've determined, which is really good, is that, um, overall absenteeism rates are also declining, which is a step in the right direction. Um, and they're also looking at, uh, MWRA is analyzing wastewater data, and the concentrations have also been going down too, so all of its reflecting, we're past the spike, past the peak, hopefully on the way down. Um, our seven-day incident rate, which I calculate it out every week, is also going down too, which is good. Um, it was one fifty-five last Thursday, it's down to ninety-five. And that's a standardizing equalizer to basically determine your transmission rates throughout your community versus other communities, so if you take our number compared to Andover or Lawrence or Methone, it gives you a standardized number, which is kind of levels of playing field a little bit. Um, we were seeing about a hundred cases plus every single day through this peak, which was a lot of work, a lot of numbers coming in, it was very overwhelming. But we're down to the teens, twenties, and thirties, which is a great sign. Um, obviously, the school numbers too, uh, published every week by the school department, the students and staff numbers are also down, so that's also a good sign. Um, a couple of new things since last time I was here, was, uh, the isolation and quarantine requirements and guidance has changed significantly. It was a fourteen-day quarantine, or ten, depending on if you test out, as well as a ten-day isolation, those have both been shortened down to five days. Um, what that comes from is the science behind the virus, the incubation period and transmission, uh, periods, they determined were a lot shorter than what they originally thought, so if you are exposed to the virus, it may take you a couple of days to incubate it, and then, before you test positive, you're infectious for one to two days. And then you have symptoms, or you test positive, you're only infectious for up to three days after that. You have your outliers on that backend too, but the majority of people are not infectious after about five days, which is really good, so the theory and the process for doing that, the intent behind that was, more people are apt to stay home for five days than ten days, and they saw that through various studies and polls, that a lot of people weren't quarantining for their full-time or isolating for their full ten days. So at least if it's five, more people will comply, is their rationale behind that. Um, they also eliminated the contact tracing collaborative at the state level, so they're switching away from full contact tracing of every single positive case, and going more towards a targeted approach, with aiming for highly sub-imp populations, clusters, and school-aged children versus everybody out there that has a positive test, so they're trying to change their mentality on that, make it a little bit easier and more targeted to the, uh, the groups you want to actually hit. Um, the school departments are also changing their test-and-stay policies. Um, it was taking up a lot of time and resources, so Desi came out with new guidance, uh, last week, the school department is looking at it and going to be adopting it, um, for the end of this month. Um, this will target more symptomatic testing versus asymptomatic and blanket testing, which should just, you know, conserve your resources and target symptomatic testing versus asymptomatic. Um, a couple of things that have also changed too, is the federal government is actually sending out free tests to everybody who wants them. So, um, I put it on the dashboard this past week, the federal government through USPS is sending out, uh, four tests per household. You just got to go onto the website and order it, it's free. Um, and then they also announced that, uh, you can request a digital vaccination card now. A lot of people have been calling us, trying to get their vaccination records through, uh, the state website. You can actually do it yourself now, go online, and you can get a QR code on your phone, you get your digital vaccination records, you can show that wherever you go somewhere. Um, let's see. Uh, I included links to both of those on last week's dashboard, so if anybody has any more dashboard ideas, anything you guys want to see on there, uh, let me know, and I can add that information on there for you. Um, right now, our vaccination rate in town has been fantastic, we are up to seventy-six percent fully vaccinated, eighty-four percent partially vaccinated. Uh, we do have another clinic, uh, this Thursday at the high school, uh, all the slots are full, uh, which tends to happen once you send the links out publicly, uh, they fill up r- really quickly, which is good, so people want it and are getting it. Um, we are in the process of scheduling more vaccination clinics, I'm working with, um, here at Lawrence Family Health Center right now, on getting additional student clinics set up. We are also looking to do some targeted outreach too, to, uh, homebound, as well as, uh, senior boosters, and kind of getting that process up and running, so now that the holiday spike is over, we're trying to get back to, um, getting all this other stuff done versus just managing all the cases. Um, if anybody has any questions, let me know, I know, um, I've been getting various emails and questions every day from residents, so if you guys have anything, uh, send them my way, or ask away.
Just want to add one thing, Brian, um, just about testing that we're doing internally, so, because we have gotten some questions. So we were able to order, um, two thousand three hundred tests using our Opera funds, um, and rather than do just a general giveaway of the tests, we decided to do a more strategic handout, so we have eighty tests going out this week to our Mails on Wales recipients, so they'll be included in their mails, which we're really excited about. We have forty going, um, through Laurie to the Housing Authority, and they're going to go to the family units there, so we're happy about that. We've sent some home in the Veterans Males, so they have a, a monthly lunch they pick up, and we're going to do it again next month too. We're doing, when we're announcing it, I think tomorrow, but until you know, we're doing, um, a small business program, where we have a hundred and fifty small businesses that will be eligible for four tests. Um, so we'll be giving out six hundred tests that way, we're hoping what that will do is will help us keep small businesses open in town, um, by having tests available, because sometimes they are hard to get. We have eight hundred that we're holding for the schools, so that they can test after February school vacation, so we're not scrambling again. Uh, and the rest right now, we've held for employee testing, um, unfortunately, we've had quite a few cases in town, so we're able to test when that happens. Um, but it, so far, we've had some pretty good feedback on the initial implementation, we're excited about rolling out the business program tomorrow, so, good news.
Those are great programs.
Yeah, we're really excited about it.
Okay, I have a question for Brian. Hi, Brian, it throws Mary, um, so this digital vaccine card, what does that say about the, the real card that you got when you went and got your, your vaccines? Is there a-
You still have a real card too, but you can also get a digital format of that card, and it actually gives you a QR code that somebody can scan, and it'll bring your card up.
So it, it doesn't, so the, the, the physical card still has value, you still can use it, but it's-
Correct.
Okay, but it's just good to have, okay, I just didn't know that-
It's just another way to show your information.
Yeah, I was just- Right, but I was just wondering, are they not accepting the real card anymore? That was a kind of a long way of getting to the question, but, okay, good to know.
Yep.
Thank you.
Brian, a couple, one question, uh, and also a comment, so I did receive my pre-government test today, so that you get two kits, which contain four tests, and I think it took less than not even ten days, from the time I submitted for them, and to delivery was today, so I would encourage people to get out there and request those, because they do come rather quickly. Uh, Brian, just a question, what is some of the nature of the questions that you're receiving? You said you're getting a lot of emails and questions, just curious, what are some of, the nature of some of those questions?
A lot of it has to do with exposures and what to do. Um, we do get calls all the time about their vaccination records and how to get that, um, or I get a call from a coach, or a league manager, or a parent who says, my son was on basketball team, they practiced, one of the kids is now positive with COVID, what do I do? And they just go through the guides and talk to you about the steps they should do, following that exposure.
Okay, and what, what are those steps, just so everyone knows, you know, are they-
So I talk to them about what the practice was, what the exposure was, are they considered a close contact, are they vaccinated? So if you are vaccinated, and fully vaccinated, that means you're two full shots, um, it doesn't require a booster yet, but if you have your two full shots, then you do not have to quarantine, you are considered immune, e- even if you're exposed, and you don't have to quarantine. If you are close to that person, within six feet for fifteen minutes, so if it's a, if it's a basketball game, you could consider that a close contact situation. If it's a practice, and they're doing drills with different groups, and your son's not in that kid's group, then you aren't considered a close contact. But if you're in the same group for an entire practice, or hockey, or other indoor sports, then you could be considered a close contact, you have to quarantine, and quarantine for five days, and then you can test out. So we do recommend that people do get tested, um, just as a precautionary too.
Only the unvaccinated people need to quarantine, vaccinated people just-
Correct, yeah, exactly.
And Brian, does it matter if they're masked or not masked within that six feet?
It does not.
It does not.
No.
No, I was just going to say that was good information, thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Sure.
At, at, at the risk of, uh, anecdotal sort of story, um, you know, one of the challenges that you, you have, of course, is getting to the incremental, that last group, right? The folks that need to get their second shot, people get booster, and of course, people who don't have it at all. And I will tell you, it's, from an exposure standpoint, what's really struck me over the past month, I work with a team of people, we're all over the country, there are twenty, there are twenty of us. Everybody in this group has been vaccinated, boosted, seven of the twenty of us received, got COVID. And two of one, we didn't test positive until about two or three days after it kicked in. All of us were like, you know, it, that you're testing each day, day one, nope, day two, nope, day three or four, bang, it kicks in. And I just, wondering whether or not, helping people understand that that's out there, and I think, you know, our group, um, I think individually recognized right away, it's like, listen, I'm not testing positive, but you know what, let's kind of pull back, and let's, you know, let's, let's take some precautionary steps, and it seems to me that's one thing that people might want to be talking about, or, 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 it should be out there a little bit, which is protect yourself if you, a- a- and try to think proactively, um, if you start to get symptoms, because once you're on that train, you don't really know you're on that train until it's left the station, technically, with a test, right?
Yep, and the at-home tests aren't as sensitive on the, the beginning end or the back end-
Right.
As your standard PCR test, so you test positive later-
Yep.
And test negative earlier with the at-home antigen tests.
Brian, is there any talk of another variant on its way, they, what I've heard in, in the news is that, um, each variant becomes more and more contagious, but, um, not as, um, restricting or not as, uh-
As severe.
Yeah, severe, thank you.
Yeah, so, I haven't heard of a new variant coming around yet, we're still at about ninety-five percent Omicron, five percent Delta. The state tests about thirty percent of their positive samples every week, and records that information, so they're still seeing Omicron is the number-one strain, obviously, it's been re- raging wildfire around the entire country and world. So that's definitely, good to know that all Omicrons still, there's no new variant coming. Uh, this particular variant, like you said, was more transmissible, but less severe. Part of that is, and there's no definitive data that states this is exactly why, but because our vaccination rates are so good in the U.S., um, if you are vaccinated, it does lessen your symptoms and severity of the illness. So when Delta first started, we were at forty percent vaccinated throughout the country, now we're at seventy percent, so it's much better in terms of people having immunity to the coronavirus.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, um, you know, we really do appreciate all the work that you guys have done these two, past two years, I can't believe we're really even saying that, but isn't it amazing that we're still here, we're still masked, um, it was only supposed to be two weeks, if I remember correctly.
One long runway day.
It's been a long, it's been a long, um, long journey, and we know that you guys are really working hard and overtime, and we really do appreciate all your hard work, so thank you for coming tonight and giving us an update.
Thank you, anytime.
One last thing, Brian, happy birthday to your mother. Saw that on Facebook.
I go, we go on about once a month.
Thanks, Brian, have a great night.
Thank you, you too.
All right, we are going to move on to licensing, so I will entertain a motion to open, um, the licensing commission.
Move to open a meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, over to you.
All righty, we've, uh, it's an easy one now, if we did all the heavy work in December, all worked out, thank you, uh, everybody's patience. Um, we have a note from, uh, Don Warren, our town clerk, about, uh, our licensing quota update. What happens when the town population grows, Melissa?
Yeah, so we did have, um, a growth in population, as we all know, so from two thousand and ten to twenty twenty, our on-premise all alcohol has increased by two, our on-premised wine and malt has increased by one, our on-premise all alcohol has increased by one, and our off-premise wine and malt has increased by one. So that means we now have five all-alcohol on-premise available, four wine and malt on-premise available, one all-alcohol package store licenses available, and one wine and malt package store licenses available. So we have it increased based on population, only happens every ten years. So we'll do this again in twenty thirty, but, uh, that's who we are right now.
And we've got, uh, an applicant already for one of the licenses, right?
We do, yep, good news travels fast, so we have already received an application for the all-alcohol package store.
Well, that's great, good.
And this includes, um, ones that were passed at town meeting, not by population?
Yeah, so our, our legislative ones are separately accounted for, and not included in the, um, quota increase. So they would not be included in the quota increase, but they are in addition to what we are allowed by the census.
Without getting into too much detail, is the applicant someone that we've seen before?
I don't know, I haven't seen the application.
Oh, you haven't seen it, okay.
Nope. Laurie says no.
Well, I don't think so, I mean, I haven't seen the person, but looking at the email I don't know.
Oh, interesting.
That's good, new business.
Nothing but a good surprise.
There we go. Uh, that's, I think, all we have.
All right.
So, uh-
Motion to move on to licensing?
All right.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well, it's on to new business, and an exciting time, um, to open our warrant.
So fast.
So fast, and we're here already, um, May town meeting will be here before we know it. So, um, Madam Town Manager, anything to add, other than we will be opening it tonight and closing it on March fourteenth?
March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at four-thirty P.M., please. If we could add that to the motion, it would be helpful, actually.
Um, and everything needs to be time-stamped by the town clerk's office, so-
By four-thirty.
By four-thirty, on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
What day is the week, is that?
Oh, Monday? We have a meeting, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so it's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
I like to let people know, just-
Okay. All right, then I will entertain a motion to open the warrant.
Madam Chair, I'll move the select board open the warrant for the May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two annual town meeting, and it will be closed on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Oh, that's, that's four-thirty.
At four-thirty?
At four-thirty.
All second.
All right, I have a motion.
Friendly amendments.
Yes, I have a motion and a second with some friendly amendments, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the warrant is open. Everybody's here, ready with their articles.
Have we received any citizens' petitions or anything, as of today?
But don't worry, I have my list already started.
Um, and we will move on to our consent item, um, take a moment to thank Lowell Five, they are always a community partner, and so generous to the town. Um, they are making a three-thousand-dollar donation, um, to be put towards emergency rescue fire, police, and first responders, so we really appreciate Lowell Five and all that they do for the town. Um, with that, I'll take a motion to accept the consent items.
Move that the select board accept the donation from Lowell Five Bank, and they-
Move that the select board accept the donation from Lowell Five Bank in the amount of $3,000.
I'll second that with a letter of thanks, and as you just said, they are really great community partners, and as you also said, they're very generous.
Yeah.
All good.
Excellent, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again to Lowell Five. And then we'll move on to the approval of our January 10th meeting minutes. Does anybody have any comments or adjustments to that? No?
Madam Chair, I recuse myself because I wasn't at that meeting from the vote.
Of course.
Madam Chair, I'll move the select board approve the open session meeting minutes of January 10, 2022, as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, that's it. We're going to move over to, we don't have any old business, so it'll be to the town managers' report.
Quick update on the Stevens estate. So as you know, the Fireside Catering and Webber Restaurant Group are doing some construction to the ballroom that they're going to be donating. I don't have a final amount of what that construction cost is yet, although it is a couple of hundred thousand dollars. But they do, they have put in a permit application that we're currently working on now, and so I wanted to review it with you, so you would have an understanding of kind of where we're coming at. And so just to kind of start, so what they're going to be doing is some building envelope work. They're taking off all of the, and this is just the ballroom, this is just the addition, nothing to do with any of the historic parts of the building, just the addition. They're removing all of the existing siding, windows and doors. They're putting in all new windows and entrance doors, they're putting in cedar shingle siding, they're putting in, building an air infiltration barrier and a rain screen, and they're putting wall, roof, and floor insulation in. They're removing the existing floor and installing all new flooring. They're removing the steam baseboards and installing new steam baseboards. They're removing all of the existing light fixtures and installing new light fixtures at the exterior and interior. The fire alarm and sprinkler systems are all staying. They're doing new wiring and switching for all the light systems as well. They're doing a new deck and a new handicap ramp. As you know, our handicap ramp this year failed, and we were renting a handicap ramp. They're doing improved walking path improvements. They're enlarging the event tent area and buying a new tent, and they're doing some pretty extensive landscaping improvements as well. So this is to give you an idea of what that will look like. So this is obviously the aerial. This is the accessible ramp right here. They're kind of extending the walkway so that you'll be able to get to that ramp and come right up the back and into the ballroom. This is a big wood porch all in here, so they're extending it out to create a big deck with kind of a double staircase that will come down from that deck. There's French doors, three sets, that will lead out to the deck as well. And then my understanding is that this existing brick path here will actually be covered and leading out to the new tent space. Go down to the next page, sorry. They're not doing this decorative roof yet because we actually have some roof work that we need to do before they install that, but this gives you an idea of what they're going to be putting forward. It's beautiful. But the decorative fence on the bottom will be there.
And with, that's it?
Sorry.
Samples of the light fixtures?
That's some sample of the light fixtures that they're planning on using on the outside.
So they're going to be newer, but hopefully to period and style of the building?
To period, yes. Everything will be to period. They have a designer that they're working with who has a historical background, who's very impressive.
That was my first question, thinking, okay, that all sounds good, but it's...
Laurie, Laurie, Steve, and I met with them last week to talk about the importance of having this match the rest of the building, which they understand. They're very excited about the renovations.
I'm not surprised that they would want it to match.
Yeah, and this is what they plan to do on the inside.
Oh, maybe.
Isn't that beautiful?
Yeah. Oh, so even the floor is going to have the decorative, which is like, kind of like a puzzle?
The herringbone.
The herringbone, thank you.
This is, yeah, right here, yep.
That's, actually costs more money and is a complicated process.
It's gorgeous, yeah.
Same with those chip and nail rails as well on the deck, those things. We had those at my house. They were painted on the butt to paint, too.
It's really beautiful. They've put a lot of time and energy into this design. We're working with them currently on their master plan for the site, which will include the five-year plan that we're doing now. Laurie and I, I'm meeting with Jed actually tomorrow morning, he's doing, he's bundling up and doing a walk with Mass Audubon and then coming here in the morning, and we're going to talk a little bit about that five-year plan. But we're really excited. This is going to be very exciting when it's done. So they're actually planning on doing the, Laurie, correct me if I'm wrong, the exterior work first, because they have a March event, and then the interior work second, after the March event, before they open for the May season. So the work is going, I haven't signed the permit yet because they're still answering some of Steve Foster's questions, but they're planning on starting as soon as they get that sign off.
They're going to move that?
Yes.
Good for them. It's not wonderful for the DeBurrles family, but with DeBurrles closing, there is a bit of a need in that area of town in the Mount Mount Valley. And then, of course, Angelica's and Methuen is closed, too, so there is a need, so hopefully it all goes well.
Yeah, it's very exciting. So I just, I wanted to share that with you. I know there's probably a lot of interest in the community in general. You know, I know that they did review some of this with, this portion of the building doesn't need to go before the historical commission, obviously, since it's not historic, it was built in the 60s. But they did have a meeting with them just to show them what they're planning on doing. But I wanted to make sure you all saw it, too. And then I just wanted to quickly, I think I still have it...
Why are you transitioning, Madam Manager? Are they planning on doing anything with the kitchen?
They're not planning on making any improvements to the kitchen right now.
Are they using the kitchen? Are they going to be using the kitchen?
For catering, just for warming. They're, so everything...
They're bringing the food in?
Yes, they have a commissary. Yep, so nothing's really changing that. And then I just wanted to, just a quick update. So I wanted to tell you that so far, and some of these numbers aren't that helpful, but we've collected since October 15th to now an additional $6,000 in revenue from events that we had booked. And then we've collected rent from Fireside in the total, since they took over on October 15th, of $10,215.16. That's after the utilities come out. And at town meeting, we're actually going to be taking all of our capital articles that we had appropriated for the Stevens Estate, which was about $223,146, and we're going to be putting that all into the revolving account. So at the end of this, when we go into the next fiscal year, we're going to have a pretty healthy amount in the revolving account that we'll be able to use to start funding the capital improvement plan that we're working on with Fireside right now. So it's exciting. It's exciting to see positive numbers, right, and have money coming in. I mean, to see, you know, them coming forward with a plan like this and knowing it's going to be donated and we're going to be able to accept that is pretty awesome. So that's that. Woo-hoo! So I just wanted to share that.
Have they talked about what their new tent situation is going to look like?
So it's a seal cloth tent.
Seal cloth, seal.
They told us a seal cloth tent. And it's a more permanent type structure, they said. So they're, yeah, they're excited.
I don't know if we can... I feel like I live in a zoo sometimes, but I don't know.
Thank you very much. Are there any selectmen's updates or comments?
One quick update that I think is pretty awesome. Greater Lawrence Family Health Center is an amazing partner through this COVID thing, and they have opened, extended their hours at 147 Pelham Street in Methuin, so that you can actually go there between 9:00 and 12:00 and do a self swab. They're still open from 3:00 to 6:00 for a regular swab. They're both PCR tests, but it just is making testing more accessible to more people more quickly. So just throwing that out there.
Anyone else?
One thing that I'd like to say, because I know people have seen it, with the high, high, high winds on Main Street, some of our banners have taken a little bit of a beating, and unfortunately, it happened at a time when one of our workers was not well, and the other worker who, it was on vacation. So we're hoping to get it fixed up. If you have anything to add to that, Madam?
Hopefully, we'll have something in our book check.
We have our DPW crew working on a skeleton crew right now, because we're very wary of waving out the whole crew at once. So we're returning to regular staffing on Monday for all buildings unless Brian tells me that things go awry. So hopefully, we'll be back to the complete normal. But I think they're planning on trying to get to it as quickly as possible, so hopefully this week.
So we haven't, we know, we see it, and we are trying to get to it, and if there's any mishaps, we'll do our best to replace whatever might be missing.
Hopefully, we don't get snow.
Yes, I know that. I said that. I said, hopefully, we don't get snow. But the wind, the wind was really unbelievable, and it was one day after another and after another, so it was sort of, but not to worry, we're on it.
Hopefully, it won't stop. Snow first, luck man Valenquist birthday this weekend.
Happy birthday! Shall we all say? We used to bring cakes.
Thank you for embarrassing me.
Happy birthday!
Happy birthday!
And which one is it?
Absolutely. Too many.
I love birthdays.
I love them, too. So just one comment, I'm surprised you didn't make this, because you usually do every year, so I'll make it for you. If anybody wants to file for a tax abatement, February 1st is the deadline for that. It's a hard deadline, anything after that does not qualify. So February 1st.
It is absolutely hard. I always thought it was the 31st. Is that because it's on a Sunday?
I think it's always February 1.
Is it? Okay, so get it in by the 31st. Maybe that's why we say that. Yeah, thank you for that, because, yeah, even if the information is wrong and you don't file for the abatement, you're still going to have a tough job ahead of you if you miss that date. It comes from the state, it is hard and fast, and so if you've got questions, get on it. So you only have a couple days. Thank you, Dicky, I appreciate that.
Is that it? Anybody else? All right. Our next meeting is Monday, February 7, at 7 o'clock here in the Select Board Meeting Room.
The budget.
Oh, and the budget starts.
The budget.
You're very excited about the budget.
I'm excited. What else?
Do not be so as excited as Luke.
I'm excited about it.
After the Stevens Estate, come on, I mean, it's like...
It's the best time of the year.
And especially after you've got to put together.
Christmas.
Thank you for your enthusiasm, guys. I'm all excited.
And don't forget the school committee on Thursday, 9/7. We'll be talking about, you'll be talking about facilities management plan, too, again.
Great.
We'll be talking about it for the next 10 years.
We're ready, bring it on.
All right, with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So who?
All right, motion and second. All those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.